Get the forty five two.
Yep, coming around just a moment.
All right. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting's order. All right. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes for the three eighteen meeting. I'm motion.
I'll make a motion approve the minutes for the. March eighteen meeting twenty four.
Okay, Jay seconded it. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, now we get the proposed sign for thirty six Milford.
The engineer is online, Dave.
Here he is.
Can I um, want me to share my screen real quick? It's just.
We already have it up.
Oh, great, okay. So I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward as part of our final package for approval. We included um, sort of a, a standard typical sign that they would have, so. It's this two foot by five foot. Um monument sign that goes out towards the road. Um originally, they were anticipating potentially just doing, you know, the gooseneck shine down lights on it. Um and then as they um, as they advanced the design and actually engaged the lighting designer. Same exact um signage, uh dimensions and all that, and if you scroll down, it's really just. Instead of the goosenecks, it's just internally lit, they felt that would have actually a softer glow to it that might be less intrusive. Um. You know, it's any neighbors or from the visuals from the road, so just a, a clearer view of the, the sign. So we're really looking for same signage and everything, same location, just flopping flipping out the, the lighting intent of it. From a external pointing of lights to a internal glow.
Okay. How bright is that gonna be? It'll be just a.
Yeah, they said it's, you know, pretty minimal, just they, the, what they told me was a soft glow. Um.
They're gonna be on a timer? Yeah, is it gonna be on a timer also?
I can confirm that, um, they didn't give me that specific.
Yeah, obviously, we wanna be uh. You know, cautious of the neighbors. You have enough lights in that district that uh.
Yeah.
Lighting up the residential area, so.
But you, I mean, ideally, you would like it if it's, when they're not open or at a certain time at night, that, there'd be some restrictions on the timing of it.
Yeah, like.
What are the business hours?
What's that?
What are the business hours?
What are the business hours? It's around the clock, right? Twenty four hour.
Yeah, I guess they get access. Um. I'm writing to the client now to, to see if they can give me that information.
So buildings will be lit, right?
Yeah.
That's it, buildings will be lit all the time.
The buildings are lit all the time? I presume.
Yeah, he had showed us that soft glow. Um.
I think they were, we talked about that.
I mean, I, what we could do with the condition on the lighting is we could see how soft it is. And if it's not obtrusive, um, you know, we did a twenty four hour thing, wouldn't be a big deal.
No.
As long as they make it soft enough.
Okay.
All right.
All right, yeah, they did, they just let me know, yeah, it would, the, the building lights and the signage light would be on all night. So I think, I, I think it's good just to, to follow up and then we can adjust the lighting as needed.
Yeah, just say we wanna make sure we're not. Uh. Affecting the neighbors, this is, we got other light issues in that district.
Yeah.
We gotta address. But um. It uh, it would be great if it wasn't a, a extremely bright glow.
So this was a condition of your approval that they come in.
Right. All right, and you guys have any other questions? The size seems fine, the appearance looks good.
Good.
Um. Does uh, the community have any questions?
So although they met the condition.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it. So we need a motion that they met the conditions of the.
Make it there.
I'll make a motion that the sign has been approved as designed. Um with the exception of the. What do you wanna call it, the luminescence?
Condition of the, yeah, just the condition of the lighting.
Brightness.
Brightness of the lighting. To be addressed at a future date.
Second.
All those in favor? And. All right, the rest. Okay, thanks, Dave.
All right, great, thanks, everybody, good, bye.
Um. Yeah. Okay, now. Yeah. Um. I got. In uh. Three five thirty seven. Yeah. Is Damon online or?
I don't see him.
Okay. We're gonna move on to the continuation of the public hearing, uh special mid-site plan review for thirty five thirty seven Hastings.
Mister Chair, can I, I'll just update the board, I know you got a slew of emails today, because we got a slew of emails today. And matter of fact, you got one as soon as I got here. Um. I know Jeff's gonna talk about his second review. On the uh, project. Uh, we did receive a review from the Board of Health, which you got today and John got today. Um, we just received the traffic report from our peer reviewer, he is on to talk about it.
Okay.
John, I sent that to you as soon as I got.
Just.
Probably was on the way here, that's how. Um, and um. So we, you know.
Done.
Yes. So after Jeff goes through his, I think you'll find that civil is satisfied, we just need them to respond to the Board of Health. And to um, traffic and with that side.
Okay.
Hey, do it, Dave.
All right, how are you doing, Nick? Why not?
That's fair, guys.
Yeah. What we need is more paper.
Yeah. If you don't want me to print them, that's not happening. There's two whole sides of the, the dog.
John was the one that spent some.
Right now. Thanks, Jeff.
Oh, you've got them all in, uh, they're not, he's not collated like uh. Yeah, that, when you have to like.
Damon, we're both here.
One of these. One of these two.
About Megan, that?
Those are all of them, it's.
John?
Yeah.
Yes. Actually, you can give all this over to Jack. They don't give it outside.
Me again. Process as well, thank you.
Yeah, here you go. Here you go. All right, we're gonna start with uh. A town civil representative, uh Jeff Walsh, Graves Engineering. Um, so received your report and really entire board did. Um. Anything, I, I see of a, one concern about additional parking. Um. Looks like everything else. Additional parking.
Additional parking, um, actually.
I didn't see that.
Nope.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah. Uh. Good evening, everybody, um.
Okay, no, no, he, that's okay, and the one I looked at, it wasn't. Potential future parking airplane was provided, okay.
All right. Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, for the record, my name is Jeff Walsh, I'm with Graves Engineering, the Civil Engineering Peer Review Consultant for the Planning Board. Um, but just under a week ago, uh, we received revised documents to address comments in a letter that we issued back in uh. Uh, oh, March twenty first, and not that long ago. Nevertheless, um. We went through the revised materials, we issued a letter just today, came out this morning by email. Um, and with Gail's absence, um, we're just able to get the copies to the members, I understand, in paper form. But anyways, um, with respect to, I, I, our scope of work was to review for general civil engineering on the site. Review for compliance with the technical issues associated with the compliance with the zoning bylaw. Review the stormwater management um, and drainage designs in compliance with the Mass D E P Stormwater Handbook and Standards. Um, this is a peer review on behalf of the, of the Planning Board. Um, we have no problem if you share our comments with the Conservation Commission. Um, with respect to my earlier comments, uh, one of them, uh, to your point, Mister Chairman, about parking. Um, in the revised documents, they allocated space for what was commonly called reserve parking. Um, the reserve parking was not included, or the impervious area associated with it was not included in the hydrology report. But nevertheless, I backed out of their hydrology report, what if some grass was replaced with impervious and, and it's my opinion that. If you were to ask for revised hydrology computations, it'd be such an insignificant um, change that um, I don't think. Revisiting that would, would, would be have any meaningful um, impact on this, on, on the board's decision. Um, so that's why I didn't, I didn't push that issue any further, but with respect to allocation of space, I'm fine with, with where they propose the, the extra parking. Um, to add enough parking to meet the zoning bylaw. Um, we didn't really have many comments whatsoever. One thing that I would like to speak of in just a moment, and I know you have a traffic peer reviewer, is that uh, they submitted churning templates. And on the easternmost site entrance, if you, if somebody were on um. Uh, Route sixteen and turning right into the project, if a truck were turning on, the churning template shows. The truck going on to the island, I assume that the intention is to have a mountable traffic island, so that. Uh, truck traffic can go over it, but yet it'll cause cars to, the drivers, most anyways, to wanna stay into the passenger travel lane. It's not unlike the uh, shoulder you see around the small rotaries Mass D O T is doing. Anyways, it looks like they're intending to have a mountable island, but I couldn't find enough information that. When I look at the plans in the eyes of being a contractor, does it tell me use mountable materials, what specific materials, heights, things like that? And that's comment number eleven.
Okay, so this little island you're talking about here.
Yep.
You have a concern of that?
Oh, I just wanna make sure that the.
Since that it's written, that's written.
Plans are clear to the contractor of, of the, my assume, my assumption that they're intending to have a mountable island. In other words, if it's vertical granite curb, that's not mountable. If that's the intention, then.
Sloped with asphalt or something on the, on the, uh, not, and not shrubbery and landscaping.
On signs and so forth, yes.
Okay, the largest truck that occasionally entered the site and drive over it, but the other vehicles intention is to keep them in.
Just make sure it's noted on the plan, and that's what Jeff's looking for, I think, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, everything else, I was comfortable with the revisions.
Sure. Assuming it's not an issue, because it's an extension of an existing lot. Setback and there's a downline there, I don't know if that's the setback or not, but it's right on it. Yeah, I think. What? Yeah, that's, that's the, the building setback, Tom. Yep. That's this building setback, Tom.
And not, not a parking setback.
Not the parking, yeah.
And I'm double checking the parking regulations to.
Dave, my recollection is ten feet.
I think it's ten feet, yeah. Okay.
In the sense.
I presume that's greater than.
At best, my recollection it was.
Uh, do you have anything further to add?
I have nothing else.
Uh, no, really, all I wanted to do tonight was run through some key updates to the plan, the response to ten months and some of the feedback that got. From both the board and the Conservation Commission to date, as well as some of the split. So just take a couple of minutes to run through those on the plan here. Um, we've incorporated some additional perimeter screening into the project. We've added some evergreen trees between the soil absorption system and the woodland path to help the cleaning Washington Street. We've added additional fence line at twenty four Washington Stretches. Uh, we've got a continuation of the proposed screening fence all the way around sixteen on the, on our property side. The boundary. Also a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees behind thirty one and thirty three Hastings Street, just to give a little bit more screening to the direct of butters. We adjusted the footprint of the blow absorption system, basically. All of this portion that was coming straight across a little bit further away from sixteen, the system in its entirety is still well beyond the required setbacks. And Title Five, but that gives a little bit additional screening here for sixteen and, and pulls the system a little bit further away from the slot as well. On the public water supply side of things, what we did was we pulled. The storage tank, the well pump house. All outside of the hundred foot buffer zone. To, to minimize any disturbance, approximately resource areas, the wells' location has not changed, but we minimize the gravel required to get down to the two valleys. We've also relocated the woodland path outside that hundred foot buffer. Uh, those changes are in direct response to some dialogue with the commission. Uh, aside from that, some minor stormwater updates to the infiltration basin in those components in response to, to Jeff's comments. And otherwise, we're here to answer any questions or comments, or take any comments from the board and the public. You guys have any other further questions?
Well, Jeff's okay with everything, I think we addressed.
All right, um, traffic, uh, Dean's here, Bob.
Yes, hello, um. Bob Micho, uh, M D M Transportation Consultants, uh, good evening. Uh, I forwarded to Jack, uh, the outcome of our transportation peer review, um, it's in summary, a pretty clean review. Uh, we, we find that the submitted materials were prepared uh, to a good engineering standard and practice. Um. There were really a couple of areas that we focused our commentary on, uh, one of them was parking. Uh, we didn't see that there was supporting um, analysis to, to uh, confirm that the proposed parking supply, which falls below the zoning. Uh, typical zoning requirement uh, is gonna be sufficient to support the use, we're not suggesting that it won't. We just, we'd suggest that there be some analysis provided that would support better the notion of having. Uh, the, the parking supply at, uh, just over a hu, I think it's a hundred and forty eight parking spaces. Um, just as a point of reference. Um, we looked at I T E parking generation. Uh, the latest available addition and applied it to just the supermarket component of the project to learn. Where we would land for what, what's known as eighty fifth percentile parking demand. And that number uh, is about a hundred and forty parking spaces for the supermarket alone. Uh, that does not include the, the retail component at the salon, the commercial piece at the salon, so. Um, we, we think, um, you know, that that uh, calculation or some, uh, some basis for. Parking supply should be provided to the board. I will point out that my principal concern with parking would be the area annotated as snow storage. Uh, there's some thirteen parking spaces located to the northeast uh, portion of the parking area that are designated for that potential use. Um, that would certainly, uh, under wintertime conditions, put a little bit of stress, potential stress on the parking supply. And uh, we'd wanna uh, simply underscore the importance of making sure that the parking supply is retained. Uh, to the extent possible at that hundred and forty eight spaces, perhaps even having uh, reserved spaces identified somewhere on the plan to the extent that. Um, actual practice that demonstrates the need. So that's one of our principal uh, comments, the other had to do with site circulation. I think uh, Graves had pointed out that there was in fact a uh, swept path analysis that appears to have been submitted, I have not seen that. But our request was to provide that to demonstrate, demonstrate the ability for. Uh, service vehicles and emergency apparatus to properly turn into and circulate within the property. Uh, I would be glad to uh, take a look at those submitted materials to uh, ensure that they're, they're meeting that standard. Although I haven't had, had a chance to, to actually review them formally. Um, beyond that, um, you know, we've been involved, review of this property. Uh, in twenty twenty two as well, we're well aware that a mass D O T is undergoing a rather significant improvement program along Route sixteen. The applicant is appropriately coordinated with D O T to ensure that their proposed improvements, namely a signal at the front door, are being designed in a way that's compatible with that uh, program. Uh, we've looked at in detail at the analysis results of what they're proposing to do at the front door and find that it adequately supports the proposed use. Uh, any delays uh, that would be uh, occurring during peak hours would really be focused on the driveway itself. Um, but the driveway is designed in a way that will properly accommodate um, queuing and operations for the, for the site um, under peak hour conditions. Um, that is it in a nutshell, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions that the board might have as, as relates to uh, transportation.
So you, you uh, said you, that you have a concern about the, the number of parking spaces?
Well, um, it's not uncommon for commercial properties to have parking supply that, that falls below a zoning standard. Um, but when that occurs, there's uh, usually an analysis that would support. Uh, the number of spaces that are being proposed, and one of the ways to do that analysis is to look at industry standard um, parking generation rates. By land use type, uh, to see where average and peak demands might land uh, at full occupancy. Uh, it, I've, I've done a preliminary version of that, just to understand whether or not a hundred and forty eight parking spaces would reasonably support. What they're proposing to do, at least on the commercial side. And, and those initial results indicate that uh, if you take. The thirty six thousand five hundred square feet of supermarket use, and that includes the outdoor retail component. And apply those industry standard rates, that the peak parking demands that would be created uh, land at about a hundred and forty parking spaces. Um. When I view the plan and see that there is um, a proposed snow storage area. That would essentially rely on thirteen of those hundred and forty eight spaces, it raises some concern. That uh, A, we're hitting the, you know, the ceiling of peak demand based on the industry standard, and we're starting to chip away from that supply. The effective supply by assigning certain number of those spaces for wintertime snow storage area, right? So I, it's simply, it's a concern that I, I'm pointing out to the board that just needs to be better supported by, by analysis.
So. The only time that they'd be concerned about it would be during snow storage.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, like, I, we've got a lot of experience with.
It sounds like they meet the zoning. If they're not allotting those.
No, they don't, they don't meet it, but it's satisfies, Bob.
Oh, we got a, a hundred and forty, well, they had a hundred and forty eight space, I thought it required one forty.
So. Sixty.
Yeah. Oh, one sixty of.
Yeah, if I may, the, the one forty eight was specifically selected to meet the anticipated demand.
Okay.
The basis for that was to utilize the smart parking model by law that the state's released. Which recommends three spaces per thousand. So the state requirements would require a minimum of a hundred and twenty four spaces and a maximum of a hundred and sixty six.
Okay.
We propose one forty eight to meet that minimum and then provide a twenty four space buffer.
Okay.
Uh, for the anticipated demand.
Yeah, 'cause I. I thought that the smart uh, was far less than what we had originally proposed, when we originally proposed that, that parking bylaw, that several years ago. Uh, the state analysis was greatly different at that time than, than the changes that have come down in the last couple of years.
Yeah, as a culture, we've, we've put in way too many parking spaces.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we're more concerned about now is aqueous surface instead of, you know, they're shrinking everything, less pavement. Um, so, but we would need that in a waiver request.
Yeah, the waiver request is in the, okay, narrative, yeah, so we requested a waiver for the minimum number of parking spaces, uh, which is allowed. So we're requesting an eleven percent reduction.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
John, you, you, you own a couple grocery stores, right?
Yes, we do.
A, any reflection on parking?
The stores aren't that, that crazy busy, um, we have, have no parking problems in any of the parking shops that we currently, I could give you actual customer. To go by the customer.
You know.
Customer per day.
Are you having a problem is all I've.
No, no, never had a problem in anything.
Yeah, no, and, and like I said, there's more concern aqueous surface today than there is.
But that would also be based on the size of the lots, if they're oversized to begin with, then you wouldn't have a problem.
True.
True. But I could give you, I could get customer counts per day, that would help.
I mean, at, at the end of the day, if there's an issue with the thirteen parking spaces, during snow events, they can re, they can have a stipulation where. They have to remove all snow out of the, you know, if those thirteen spaces are causing a problem, they have, any snow event, they remove the snow offsite. You know, they'd say you wouldn't call snow storage if that became a problem.
If I may add one, one item that maybe satisfy the snow issue, all right, so we've got thirteen spaces dedicated for snow storage, we have eighty five hundred square feet of outdoor retail. The outdoor retail is not gonna be substantially busy.
Right.
If busy at all during the month where we have. So, you're offset, you know, you're losing thirteen spaces, but you're also not utilizing the full benefit of the eighty five hundred square feet of outdoor.
Right. That's more of a summer.
Yeah, Barry.
Yep. Are you required to have six spaces for E V charging? You could pick up some.
Technically, in our bylaw, I guess.
Well, the new state building code requires, I believe, a minimum of one for a commercial project. We've proposed in excess of that, six is my recollection.
It's six on the plan.
Yeah, six, yeah.
So. If, why have six? You don't need them.
Well, electric vehicles are becoming more.
Other cars aren't gonna be able to park that.
They are cars.
Is that many?
I, I, yeah, I don't uh.
Either way, I mean, I think.
They're gonna need to be charged. I think, I think, I think a hundred and forty eight spaces would.
Will go shopping.
Probably uh, manage the traffic in my mind. Um. I'm gonna go to the community right now, so.
Hi, this is Lance, seventeen Caddan Road. Is there any consideration for visitors and guests to the housing units as to where they're supposed to park? Um, given the weekends, you know, when you expect a number of visitors into that neighborhood. Um, which could also be the peak period for the retail, where would visitors, you know. Children, grandchildren, whatever, where would they park, how far would they have to walk, is there available space to park for visitors to the housing unit?
I gotta answer that one. Yeah, so each of these housing units has a garage, they also have a driveway, so we've dedicated a minimum of two spaces per unit. There's also a twenty four foot wide circulation loop road, so let's say you have a birthday party, right? Not unlike any other subdivision, you have some cars in your driveway, you have some cars along the edge of the road. So it's, it's designed in a manner as, as any other subdivision would be, but for a, a restricted use.
I mean, it's your question.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, um.
So it seems like we need just a couple responses to the traffic study.
Yeah, I think we need to hear from emergency fire.
I haven't heard a peep from them, they got everything.
Changing other guy.
Have I, have you asked, true. Robert, have you spoken to? Robert, have you spoken to fire or emergency regarding the traffic in there?
I have not. Our standard review would usually rely on the swept path analysis to confirm that they're using the appropriate design vehicle for the town or under a mutual aid process, you know, making sure that the appropriate design vehicle has been accounted for. So I could certainly reach out to fire to get some input from them, but I want to see that swept path analysis first so that I could confer with the fire department that A, you know, they are in fact using the correct vehicle. And B, there may be some other aspects of circulation that are particular to the department that they'd like to see.
I can email both chiefs. Who is the new?
Have you, have you spoken?
Yeah.
Yeah, you started.
We have not spoken with the new chief.
Okay.
So the system sizing and general locations are based on prior discussion with the old chief, and we've run the swept path analysis for the truck given us at the time. It was submitted in our response to Jeff's comment later. So we ran the largest delivery truck and the largest.
You're running against Bob too?
Yeah, yeah, I'll pass along to Bob, yep.
Thank you.
And then we'll wait for John to.
Yeah, what was your feeling on the swept path analysis? Did you take a look at that?
I didn't look at it very much, knowing that there was a traffic peer reviewer, but I did pick up on that island issue that we talked about earlier.
Okay. All right, so we got the swept path analysis.
And we'll need the applicant's response to the board of health's letter.
Yeah.
I think we have the board of health here too. Do we need anything?
We have one.
Do you have any comments from the board of health?
See, we just submitted that today.
Yep.
See, we issued that letter along with the recommendations and we'll say concerns, but some of the questions that our engineer had about a couple of certain aspects of the project. You'll find it probably digest and for John to digest and take a look and.
You.
I didn't even see him yet. I was here, he was on the office all day and they said it came.
Yeah.
Okay, that's something that you will address with them.
Yeah, I mean, that's the board of health doesn't reflect them decision of sound, so.
We did ask for some comments, I think, right? That's why we were the, right?
Yeah.
Yes. We have conservation here, I see.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's conservation while we have you here.
For the water has to be fair. Or capacity for water, because it is.
I'm not able to hear Isabella. Could you repeat that in a microphone, please?
You're going to have to modify.
I think the two concerns I still have are that the wells are in the bordering land subject to flooding. So if there's been any consideration to additional storage capacity for the well, and then I still, the grade for the infiltration basin does enter the 50 foot buffer zone. And so I think the commission should request that that gets moved out. But that's the two, because I saw all the changes that you've made, moving the woodland path out and the gravel out.
Thing that would be. You're asking about the bordering, are you talking about statutory storage?
No, I'm talking about storage for the wells themselves, the storage in the.
Storage tank?
Yeah.
Yeah, the storage tank is located well outside of bordering lands, so just by the size of that tank is based on the withdrawal rate for the well and the what mass D E P requires for safety storage, so 72 hours.
You know.
So there's amounts of storage provided in that storage. And that's all going to be worked out through the permanent process for the water source with D E P. In terms of the 50 foot back from the buffer zone for the infiltration basin, that currently complies with the stormwater handbook regulations. The infiltration area is more than 50 feet beyond the well and the slope dying back down. Yes, it's within 50 feet, but it's not the infiltration area.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, what I was hearing of concern brought by Mass D E P with respect to the wells back in 2022 was the location of the wells being in the bordering lands subject to flooding with a hundred year flood plain. And the concern with that is you don't want a well sitting in floodwater. You want the base of the well out of floodwater. And I don't know what's proposed on this set of plans because the public water supplies with D E P and conservation permitting is with the conservation commission, but there was an apples and oranges discussion about, in my opinion, about what D E P brought up as a concern in 2022. And it's my opinion that that concern was probably the location of the wells themselves being drilled in the floodplain. It had nothing to do with the storage of water. Unless they were proposing storage of water within the floodplain, which I understand they are not now.
So I, I, I'm sure this D E P comment that you guys are referring to, I think it's the peer reviewer from the prior submission. D E P has reviewed and approved the location of these wells and the pumping test that we intend to run on this location. There's a requirement when the wells are in bordering lands, something exploding at the top of the the well casting is the minimum is two feet above floodplain location. So we'll have to comply with that requirement as well as are installed.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. So we got a couple of open items. That we need to resolve. Mostly the, we've got to finish up the traffic. And I think that's about it, correct? Just traffic for it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll review the board of health letter, we'll review the traffic letter from Bob and his team and provide responses to the.
Yes. All right, so it looks like at this point we'll have to continue the meeting.
The meeting is May 6th, if that's enough time.
Like your May 6th, it's two weeks from today.
And Mr. Well, hopefully, let's try and get all these things tied up.
Yeah.
So we can get this matter resolved one way or the other.
Yes, because we got to provide Bob with a couple of additional pieces of information. I gave him the opportunity to look at that.
Let's make sure we respond to board of health.
Yeah.
I mean.
If we, Barry won't be here on the 21st. Do we want to make?
The 20th.
20th?
Yeah, I won't be here.
We need Barry, and here's why, because John will no longer be sitting on the board.
Right. Barry's going to be here.
And we need. Well, no, yeah.
Can do it the week before.
It's going to fall over three weeks.
That work?
I can do three weeks. I can do three weeks. Are you sure somebody reserves one, please, Jack?
So.
13.
Hey, all right, I'll make a motion to continue 3537 Hastings Street to 13th?
Yep.
May 13th at 6:00 PM.
Typically on two test results that had to do with the, or testing.
Yeah.
His perspective on those results and a perspective of the soil evaluations as well, just so that's.
Yeah, the bottom line is I don't want to hold up a decision that the board has a time to react. And whether we approve it or not, they still have to meet border health regulation. So even if we approve it, doesn't mean it can be built, so.
Also going to ask people, also going to ask people to help with that committee if you would want to go to a health engineer to be.
If he'd like to show up, it'd be great. I mean, if we can get this all wrapped up at the next meetings, I'd appreciate it.
And just so the board knows, we did original testing out there and then the border health, Joyce from the border health said she wanted to witness herself after the town's engine, you know, engineer or consultant witnessed it. So we redid testing a second time.
So you've tested twice.
We've tested twice.
And both times came up. Came up okay.
Yes, so the second time was Joyce was present at every.
Okay. And then, okay.
It always seems that that's.
Like, okay, once again, planning. If somebody gets approval of planning, every other board or commission, they still have to get those approvals on their own. So we can't hold up a decision of planning for the other committees. So, but your input at the next meeting would be great.
Thanks, Bo.
Yeah, I made a motion on the table.
You most likely table and wait for a second. I got it, yeah. Hold on in favor. All right. Next meeting will be May 13th, May 13th. Yep. Oh, yeah. All right.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's, let's. Thank you.
There's two hearings for.
Okay, public hearing for citizen petition by Eric Hodge.
One up, Eric.
Mr. Chairman, this presentation will actually be being done by my attorney, Mark Plans, along the line. I just wanted to make sure it all got done right.
Yeah, no problem. Don't blame me.
Why not, why not do it once?
Looks pretty straightforward, so. Like to.
Mute it at the moment. There we go. There we go.
Oh, you muted. Mark, you have done mute yourself.
Okay, my word will know.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. My name is Mark Lanza. I'm a attorney. I specialize in land use zoning and real estate law.
With your, your audio is broken up. We can't hear you.
Okay, let me, let me, let me speak closer. I'll put it out.
Still broken up.
Okay. I'll do my best here.
Nope.
Maybe go up video mark if that's okay and audio. Possibly.
No, not any better, Mark. Eric, you want to, Eric still. Mark, do you want to just call in using the audio bridge?
I can try that.
Okay.
Bill, while they're doing, while they're doing that, do you need me for anything else tonight?
Uh, let me just take a look at the agenda. No. You don't mind, I'm going to disappear. Good night, guys.
Well, we do mind if you disappear.
Be on the 13th. Okay, thanks, Captain. You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Looks like kind of a little problem. Why don't we go over your project and then if he hasn't, we need to get him on a cell solid.
I'm sure, actually, probably just call him directly now. If I'm honest, I don't have anything specific to spare.
Yeah.
You do the same thing.
I, I mean, I read your petition, other than the fact that it's a zoning map change. Really requires a public hearing.
Your call has.
That's all done.
Are you on the line now?
I'm on the line now, and I wonder if I should exit the video.
Uh, we can hear you fine right now. I think that's okay.
Okay, I'll keep it, I'll keep it like this and hopefully we know feedback.
What? Do you have the notice for the public hearing? For a public hearing?
It's public.
This is a public.
Oh, this is a public hearing, huh?
Yes.
So I think you ought to read the notice.
Hold on.
And Joe, have any notes?
No, because you know what? Look, I see Gail's not here.
Gail's not here.
Gail's not here and Jack doesn't play.
I've got it. All right, give me the notice, please. I.
Keep it on the up and ups.
You would.
Got an empty bag of Twizzlers. That's not helping us.
That was my dinner.
Oh, all right. Supposed to share with everybody else.
There weren't enough.
All right, sir, let's do this right. Do this right now.
Yeah, right.
All right.
Both public hearings are in that public hearing.
I see you got to pick one.
So I'm going to, let me just be true.
Citizen.
So we're going to open the public hearing for the citizens petition by Eric Hodge for the zoning map change. Notice here by giving this amendment planning board will hold a public hearing on April 22nd, 2024, 6:00 PM in Amendment Town Hall to discuss the proposed zoning map amendment received through a citizen petition to change zoning district of 3 Beet Street, possible 14106-3-0 from rural highway business to rural residential. We vote on at the annual town meeting. Uh, this was in the Daily News on 4, 5, and 412. Thank you. Thank you for going in the phone.
You're going to have to read it again.
Public hearing is now open. I'll let your attorney take over and then we'll see if the board has any questions.
Okay, I'm on the phone now. This is Attorney Mark Lanza. Can I be heard loud and clear? Yep, yep. Okay, I heard a member start out by saying it looks pretty straightforward. It really is. As far as zoning changes go, this one's pretty straightforward. The zoning map shows the Hardest property as being within the highway business zoning district. This came to light recently. As we all know, zoning maps are not engineered plans. And sometimes there can be issues about boundaries as shown on the map versus as shown on a surveyed plan. In this case, we have three different surveyed plans showing the zoning district line between RR and HB in two different places. One map, which we all have attached to the petition, shows it as completely within highway business. Another one says approximate line of the district, and another one shows it partly in and partly out. I can't believe that's what the town intended. The town probably didn't intend to include it in the highway business district. It's a residential property. It has been for a long time. That's the way it's been used. There's no, nothing in the record that suggests that when the highway business district was created, it was intended to include this particular property. So it's probably just a scrip, what we call a scribbler's error. And there's no real, there's no real land use planning or planning reason to keep it in this district. So we're asking that the board report favorably to town meeting that it be removed from the district by amending the zoning map. And if town meeting passes it by two thirds, then the map will be amended.
Well, I can tell you, as the, as the author of the high, the zoning bylaw for the highway business district, it certainly wasn't intended to have your property in there. I don't know how it got on the map that way, but it certainly that was definitely an error. So, I mean, I read your document.
Is it really your, your property?
Eric, I could have saved you money here during the. Yeah. I don't see any issue with it, what?
No, we just support it at the town at the.
Yeah, we just make a recommendation. Well, we got to approve it here tonight.
Yeah.
And then we'll make a recommendation.
I make a motion, as long as everybody hasn't, doesn't have any issues in the audience. It's only your prob, your property, right, Eric?
Correct.
You need the public to have a chance to.
Yeah. Any issues?
No.
All right, any issues on?
Any questions from the community?
So the only question I have.
It doesn't appear that.
Does this affect any of the setbacks for what we've already approved for other projects?
No, because I think it was you know, if we looked at past issue with the property. Past issue with the property, I think. We believe that it was outside the commercial.
But I mean, there's nothing there other than even like.
Don't wanna shoot us off in the foot.
Yeah, the setback would have been the same.
Well, twenty, like, the twenty, the one down behind Gasco. That's all the same. That's all the lines are all the same. That was already. Business anyway.
And the issue you had with thirty five or Eric had, or whoever had, was the use, not the.
Specifically about the setback. I think we all believed at that time that your property was outside the commercial district at that point anyway. So I don't think it's gonna change any. But, yeah, no, it, uh. I have no issue with supporting it, so.
I make a motion to. Uh, support this at town meeting.
All those in favor?
Alright, alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh. Hopefully I will be there to make the recommendation at town floor. We'll see. I'll be in touch.
You better be there.
And last but not least.
Last but not least, we have the public hearing for the zoning overlay district.
Let's see who's here. Okay.
You like that, doesn't it?
Which paper I'm supposed to be using? Same one.
Yeah, same one.
The one you started with.
This one.
Do we have any, uh, documents on this?
Oh, this is just Eric's.
Oh. Jack, you got another one over there?
No, that's, that's in there, isn't it?
No.
Oh, I apologize.
No, the, the meeting, the notice.
There it is.
Oh, there it is.
I, I thought they were the same.
Alright, now we got it. Now we're good. Okay. So now open the public hearing according to M D L section forty eight, section five. Uh, notice hereby given that the plan, minute plan board will hold a public hearing on April twenty second. Twenty twenty four, six P M. In Men in Town Hall. Discussing amendments to the zoning bylaw, Ian going map. For the actual fire protection overlay district to be voted on at annual town meeting. Copy of the proposed Warren article may be reviewed at the office of the planning board and this is in the Daily News on four, five and four twelve.
Okay. Well, I can, uh, I think the best way to start is, as you know. Town received numerous grants and earmarks from the state legislators. To take a hard look at. What kind of, what the possibility of a public water supply could be in town eventually. Maybe not tomorrow, but. Fifty years. And in doing so, it was, we curiously found that the aquifer. That's undermended is in this map. Which means that a good two thirds of the town. The ones that aren't on wholesale water. Are utilizing this aquifer. We are strongly urged by D E P to have an aquifer protection by law. So that we don't allow bad stuff to happen in this aquifer. Which will affect everybody in this blue area. As well as any public water supply that you may get in who knows how many years. Um, and. Let me find, I'm not good at this. Where's Eric when I need him? And I wanna, I wanna get rid of this.
So you're already sharing this?
Yeah.
Okay, so most up here can stop sharing.
Those are my things. Hold on. We've got it. That's what I wanna share. You're gonna be a big ass of to me.
Did this one?
No, it wasn't called. It's the groundwater, there it is, groundwater protection.
Might be because.
There it is. Alright. So the purpose is to promote health, safety and welfare. We talk about that all the time. And I think the most important thing to highlight is what we are no longer going to allow. Now, as you know, in zoning. Any of these uses that are in existence now would be grandfather. But. What we are. We're gonna allow soil con- conservation of soil, water, wildlife, outdoor recreation. Horse pass, bicycles. Uh, maintenance of water bodies, dams, et cetera, residential development. Farming, gardening, et cetera, construction maintenance, repair of water supplies. And any use that's in the underlying district. And most of this. Uh, on the map is rural residential. There's some commercial. What we are.
Yeah. I mean, reading. This is the first time I've had to digest this thing.
What we are asking to prohibit are landfills and open dumps. Automobile graveyards or junkyards. Landfills receiving only wastewater residuals. Uh, facilities that generate, treat, store, dispose of hazardous waste in certain quantities. But take petroleum fuel, uh, heating oil bulk, bulk stations. Storage of liquid hazardous materials, storage of sludge and septic. Storage of deicing, storage of animal manure unless it's within a structure. And, and, and there's language in here about it being on a, in an agricultural use. And storage of commercial fertilizers. You get the gist. These are the, the things that will contaminate everyone's wells. And, um, you're, whoever has a well is gonna pay the price. And I think it's, makes a lot of sense to get a handle on this. And your mend it is a little late in the game. Mostly every community I've ever worked in has a bylaw like this. This is state verbiage, D E P approved. Uh, I, we haven't offered anything. Uh, because we didn't think it should be.
So if somebody has a couple of horses and they have horse manure on site, you're not talking about, you're talking about large capacity.
Right, and they're agriculturally exempt anyway. Well, I guess if you, uh, we also did an overlay as best as we could on existing uses. And there's also restriction that gas stations have to comply with. Uh, current standards. Oh, there's more stockpiling, there's snow and ice. Earth removal, consider, um. Earth removal or any other earth removal to within fourth feet of a historically high groundwater. Treatment of disposal works. And then there's preuses that we had allowed by special permit. Um, enlargement or alteration of existing uses that do not conform to the district. So it's, I was at one of these uses in the district. And I wanted to expand it. I'm legal cuz I'm grandfather. I wanted to expand it. It would have to come here for permission. Except as prohibited under section seven activities that involve the handling of toxic hazardous materials. And any rendering impervious any lot more than fifteen percent or twenty five, twenty five hundred. Whichever is greater, unless artificial recharge, that will not degrade water quality. There was an issue about gas stations that came up. I don't see it in here. I haven't read this in a while, obviously. Oh, I will before town meeting. But. I believe. Gas stations. Uh, oh, maybe that's the storage of hazardous material cuz it's gas. Um, if they comply with current standards. They could locate it here.
Yeah, my only concern about this entire bylaw is it's gonna be conflicting with. Current bylaws that we already have, like the. The gas station bylaw.
There's all, in this district, there's only one gas station. Um, they, if they're grandfathered and if they wanted to.
Go back to the.
Then, they would have to, um, adhere to current standards anyway. Put the tertiary tanks in and all that anyway.
Matter of what, they gotta do that anyway.
Right.
Yeah. What's this map that we have here? That's, uh.
That's the aquifer map. It's just not as fancy as. The one I had.
Yeah, cuz I can't make heads and tails out of this.
Alright. See if I can get this right, Eric. Uh, don't get up.
I just wanna know if you have any more.
No, I only had like four. There's a question whether the gas station at the corner of. No, I think it is. North and, um, Milford is in this district, does that, but it looks.
What gas station should be more of?
I start against it.
It used to be.
Yeah. The only one in this district.
Uh, the one on, uh, they're building right now currently.
That would be in it and they'd have, now they have to comply with, uh, D E P standards. No Imperials not on it. You can see. This is. Uh, sixteen and they would be in this white part. I will.
I mean, I don't see, I don't see anything that, that would cause major pain for the town. I, I get that, I. Get a little concerned when the words. Uh, seepage and septic. I mean. But.
What, sludge and plant?
None of this, no, precise plan, obviously, but I'm more, you know.
There's nothing in there about, uh, septic, unless it's a commercial septic.
I don't say, I, you know. Guys, have any questions?
I promise by town meeting, I'll be better versed at this, not rushed, but. I think it makes sense. You know, we're getting closer to, to finding a good, solid public water source. In the future. And this will help protect that too, besides all the houses and.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, is there ever gonna be any enough money to actually put in a water system? I mean, we're not gonna ever, I won't ever see it, you won't ever switch, but, and there's.
But it's a good idea, uh, to protect it.
Yeah, protect it, yes, I'm just saying.
Stuck in private well still.
Yes, and we, we've had this discussion quite a bit, uh, with our engineer. You don't know what's gonna happen in fifty, seventy five, maybe even a hundred years. There might be state, federal government saying, you're putting a water system in there.
I don't think, I, to be honest with you, I don't think it'll be that long. Um, it's more and more contaminated water and men and showing up and. He use, um. You know, and there's a men in that needed around the lake certainly needs it, but, um.
Yeah, lake's not even in this.
No, no, but they have enough lot of problems over there.
I mean, I guess that I don't.
The community has any input?
Jack, you said, uh, that it would apply to any, um, any existing uses that were then expanding. What about an instance where a gas station isn't expanding but is like replacing existing equipment? Would it, would they need to conform?
I think they conform to.
They would have to conform with D E P. They wouldn't have to conform with zoning. It's a nuance, but they would end up in the same place.
Yeah, no matter what, they have the regulation, they have the strict regulations.
D E P's regulation on gas station.
It's crazy. The tanks are.
He's building, he has to build state of the art tank protect. Which is. Easily in this.
Isabella?
Yeah, here is, Jack, you were planning to meet with agricultural commission about this stockpiling. I don't know if you've thought.
We did reach out. They're a little difficult. I think they're dormant for the most part. Dylan had a discussion with a member, either I, a woman, I don't remember.
I mean, her from the cultural commission, like.
She just couldn't get the agricultural commission together. I will tell you though. Um, previously in my career, I worked in Carver. Carver's an agricultural. Actually bigger than than Men and it's about thirteen thousand people, but it's all cranberries. This gas stations and this has been adopted there and agricultural commissioners. Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I mean, it's contaminated.
The agricultural community has its own protection. I can't see them being. Oh, believe me, the agricultural commission, I'm sure has been all over this. Uh, when, when the defined by law came in place, we had. It was like, uh, three town meetings to get through there, so. We would have heard from them by.
Agricultural exemption is very strong. Court case after court case.
Yeah, the right defined by law is pretty, pretty strong.
We'll support this in the lungs.
Yeah, he's the county enforcement officer, so.
If it's a bylaw, then it's the cops that do.
Bill, we didn't discuss the site visit report for forty five.
Do we, um.
Forty nine.
Get a vote for this?
Not on the gentleman.
Right.
I think that we're just gonna. Wasn't gonna be a public hearing.
I'd like to one thing at a time.
Does anybody have any issues? Yeah, everybody's good, audience? Uh, so we're gonna vote to support this?
Well, now we have to vote to approve this.
No, just support it at town.
Alright, alright.
Or you could call Ghostbusters and ask.
So we wanted, we're gonna vote to support this at town meeting, basically just like we did with the last.
This has to be approved in the bylaw.
Now or?
Yeah, it's only for zoning, so it's not just a recommendation at town floor. This is, are we gonna approve to add this to the zoning file? It's gonna be section five point zero six. That's, uh, so this is in just.
Okay.
A okay at the town meeting. This is, do we wanna add this to the zoning bylaw?
I think we should.
I think we should.
Okay, I make a motion to approve five point zero six groundwater protection, protection district. And map.
Need a second though.
Second.
All those in fifth.
Alright.
So, that is good, so we can, uh, make the recommendation town floor. Are you gonna write the recommendations or you want me?
Good, I've done enough.
Yeah, I'll find out from you which one's gonna be there.
Well, see, at the time, if Bill's gonna be there, it's fine. I'll probably be there either way, but.
If something occurs that I can't be there, I'll let you guys.
He's better up there than me.
But, uh. I think we've dispensed up the entire. I think we've dispensed the entire agenda tonight. Let me just be sure.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, hold on one second.
Okay.
Isabella, were you intending on talking about forty-five? I mean, I let Jeff go. I really, it wasn't on the agenda for tonight, so.
The next meeting will have, if you wanna come.
Put it on the agenda.
We weren't even gonna put on the agenda, remember? We just made a thing that he's gonna deal with John. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna deal, you're gonna be. And everything.
Yeah.
It wasn't gonna be on the agenda, just.
If you have forty-five, I expect.
Then you gotta modify the um stormwater.
Right, definitely, that's right.
Yeah, I think we, they would, they gotta rerun the, the results.
Definitely.
We'll reserve questions and comments for the next meeting.
Yeah, for the next meeting.
Okay. Next meeting is the sixth.
Sounds good.
Well, why don't we just have a question on the thirty-eighth?
Right.
So, why have to go along?
Alright, bring it, man. Something was, I was supposed to be like, the liaison from the select board. To, to communicate between the boards. Is that you?
Me.
Okay, good.
Oh, okay, it was supposed to be um.
The, the other, uh, I forget his name.
No, you haven't.
Actually, no, we.
It's good.
Appreciate it, yeah, no, let's.
Did you know if you were here for, for, cause you live near the butter or if you were here for?
Uh, we are having a uh, we are, are having, same, I got a grant from C M R P C.
Motion to adjourn, right? I made a motion.
Okay.
Second. Aye.
Aye, oh.
To adjourn.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Over, oh, yeah. You guys go.
Thank you.
Um, but anyway. Yeah, so I got a fifty thousand dollar grant from uh C M R P C to rewrite the zoning bylaws. Bring Menon's bylaws up.